Good evening. We are live from the beautiful Hilltop Community Church in Richmond, California. Tonight, the Fairmead Hilltop Neighborhood Council is hosting our forum of candidates seeking seats on the Richmond City Council. I'll be your moderator this evening. My name is Robert Rogers and I work for the county supervisor John Joya's office. I also want to note that we are practicing social distancing and conforming with hall health regulations with the county here, being mindful of COVID-19. Also, our hearts are with victims of wildfires across California this evening. Starting with this election, Richmond is required to elect their members based on council district. Three of the six council seats will be elected this year and the remaining three seats will be in the 2022 election. The three districts up for election this year include District One, which includes the Iron Triangle in the North Richmond area; District Five, which includes the Annex, the South Side, and the Marina; and District Six, with the North and East and Richmond Heights neighborhoods. Richmond voters are smart and engaged, and they know that a candidate that wants the support of the voters has to earn it. They need to listen to their constituents and even those that can't vote, and work with the rest of the council to find solutions to real problems for real people throughout our community. The questions tonight were solicited from a wide array of sources and were determined using what was most appropriate for this forum. We've heard questions from earlier forums and tried to select subjects that have not already been covered. Each candidate will be allowed 80 seconds for opening and closing statements and to address seven questions that will be asked of each candidate. The order in which the candidates will speak was selected using a random number generator, and it will be random for each question. And with that, let our forum begin. Before we begin our opening statements, I should first note that candidate for District One Eleanor Thompson is unable to be here with us. She had a family emergency. So, again, we will begin for our opening statements, 80 seconds. The random order will begin with candidate from... Candidate Ms. Dandy.
Hi, my name is Ms. Dandy. Hi, my name is Ms. Dandy, and I'm from District One, excuse me, District Six. I am running because I have four children, a grandson, and we've been there for 10 years. The things that I've been doing in District Six in Richmond for the last 10 years is I worked at the school district, I work with homeless, I work with mental health. Just this morning, I received a call from Arco to come help someone that was in need. Just this afternoon, I was with Caltrans and looking at all the debris that was thrown off the side of the road. I am here for Richmond. There are a lot of things that need to be taken care of, there are a lot of people that need to be taken care of, there are a lot of issues that need to be taken care of. We've talked about a lot of things, I've been in a lot of things, I've been around. I can walk the streets of Richmond, day in and day out. If you need me, I'm there for you. If you want me, you can call me. I am the person for District Six. I am not just for Richmond, I'm with Richmond. And if anyone needs to know what's going on, just give me a call. I'm just a few seconds away. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Dandy, from District Six. Next up, candidate from... I cannot read her from here, but Vinay Pimpley.
Thank you for having me here and in your homes. I'm Vinay Pimpley. I, you know, I came here as an immigrant from India. I went blind at the age of 10, but thanks to a lot of help from friends, family, and volunteers, I managed to get a good education, a law degree from Berkeley. I've worked as a software engineer, I'm working as a government analyst now. And, you know, well, so the issue I'm most passionate about is education. And when I was appointed to the city council in 2015, I had a lot of ideas about how we can improve education in this city, but I got thrown a curveball. Our city got a junk bond rating, so I had to become an expert in city finances, and I helped navigate the city through its difficult times, and that will be important now because we just had a 7% budget cut thanks to COVID. I'm really proud of my record of approving every affordable housing project that came before council and market rate housing projects about crafting a really well-balanced police accountability ordinance. So, I'm the only candidate in our district, District Six, who has a proven record of doing what needs to be done, particularly with COVID, with reviving the economy, restoring our finances. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Pimpley. Next up, candidate Mike Vasilas.
Hi, everyone. Happy to be here. My name is Mike Vasilas. I'm a city council candidate in District Five. I'm an East Bay native and a Richmond small business owner. I graduated from UC Davis with a degree in economics and went into my father's trade as a home builder shortly thereafter. As a child, I worked by my father's side as he built entry-level housing all over Richmond, and housing is my passion. Fast forward to today, and I'm in the same city that my father was, building homes. I'm in the same profession as my father, and I'm here running for city council because I'm passionate about Richmond, I'm passionate about this city. And I believe we need governance that strives to best represent everybody, not just one side of the story. Obviously, COVID-19 has presented us with some big health and economic challenges. Well, it's a lot we can't control. What we can control is our response to this crisis. We need a city council that's committed to supporting and stabilizing both our residents and our businesses during this very troubling time. There are a lot of difficult and imminent decisions facing our city council, but I believe I have a passion for and a skill for bringing a diverse range of perspectives together to come up with balanced solutions. I'm a natural problem solver, and for the last four years, I've been 100% volunteer community advocate for this city, standing up for this city and its constituents. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Vasilas. Next up, Ahmad Anderson.
Good evening. Thank you, Hilltop Community. Good evening. Good evening, Hilltop Community Church and the city of Richmond and the Fairmead Hilltop Neighborhood Council. I'm running for the city council in District Five. It is a critical election for our city of Richmond. It is no secret that our city is suffering financially, and at the same time, the coronavirus is threatening our health, livelihoods, and business. I will provide fresh voice, new ideas, and results-oriented leadership. I will advocate for healthy, clean, and safe neighborhoods without blight, litter, and graffiti, and properly maintaining streets. I will also work towards job creation, economic revitalization, working with skilled and training apprenticeship programs, career development, and leading further to jobs and opportunities. I will also work towards addressing homelessness in a compassionate and effective manner, working on more, leading more away from managing it and moving more towards a solution base. But in the midst of all this, we need to get a look at two priorities. One of those priorities is the comprehensive COVID-19 health and welfare plan for West Contra Costa County, and secondly, the business closures and looking out for those who are losing jobs and opportunities and businesses. It is important we stand together because it's we, us together, that can make a difference.
Thank you, candidate Anderson. And next up, candidate Gail McLaughlin.
Thank you to all the organizers. I'm Gail McLaughlin, running for city council, District Five. I served on the city council from 2005 to 2017, eight of those years as mayor. During that time, working with all segments of the community, we increased the minimum wage to $15 an hour, reduced homicides 75%, passed rent control, forced Chevron to pay millions more in taxes, supported immigrant rights, defended our schools, strengthened our police review commission, and much more. Today, COVID-19 threatens our health and demonstrates the core inequities of our society. My priorities include preventing evictions on renters and foreclosures on homeowners, addressing solutions for homelessness, ending Chevron's flaring and pollution, cleaning up our neighborhoods, building affordable housing, developing a local Green New Deal, and promoting democracy in all decisions. I bring to this job my experience, integrity, kindness, and solidarity. When we build solidarity and systems of mutual support for justice around us, we can live healthier lives with social well-being. Life can be joyful, not perfect, but much better and certainly healthier. If elected, I will work to assure each and every resident experiences the best that life has to offer. I believe this with all my heart, and I look forward to carving out the road ahead with all of you.
Thank you, candidate McLaughlin. Next up, candidate Claudia Jimenez.
Buenas noches. Thank you for organizing this event. My name is Claudia Jimenez, and I am running for Richmond City Council in District Six. For the last 10 years, I worked with Richmond community, from working with moms in my neighborhood to rebuild Orsolano Play Lot, to negotiate policies to protect immigrant communities with Visa French and Mark Giggant from the police department, to leading campaigns like Invest in People No Prison that allocate $5.2 million into services. I am running because District Six and Richmond needs a strong voice to make sure nobody is left behind and everybody is included in decisions. This is why I have been endorsed by many organizations that typically don't work together, like Boapa, California Nurses Association, Sierra Club, United Teacher of Richmond, RPA, CIU, and many other grassroots organizations, and individuals like city council member Jael Mayrek, Melvin Willis, Eduardo Martinez, and Letifa Simons. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Jimenez. Next up, candidate Melvin Willis.
Good evening, and thank you to the Fairmead Hilltop Neighborhood Council for hosting this candidates forum and our moderators. My name is Melvin Willis. I'm running for reelection for Richmond City Council in District One. I was born and raised in Richmond, and for the past nine years, I've been a community organizer with Alliance of Californians for Community Empowerment. Being an organizer allowed me to get into the community and talk to my neighbors that I grew up around my entire life, but I never knew who they were. I got to know their issues, and not only get to know their issues, but been a part of mobilizing to bring people together and power numbers for fight for the issues that they care about in their community. That's why I was a power to pass in rent control and just cause for eviction, increasing the minimum wage to $15 an hour, and also strengthening our sanctuary city ordinance along with working with other council members before me who also supported these measures. Moving forward, we have a lot to recover from because COVID-19 has caused a lot of damage. Homelessness has increased, job losses increase, and people are desperate to find resources that are available for them to alleviate a lot of the pain they're feeling as we hit 2020. My responsibility and what I'm going to look forward to is working on affordable housing opportunities, homelessness, and connecting people with resources who were impacted by COVID. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Willis. And now for our final opening statement, candidate Najari Smith.
Thank you, Fairmead Hilltop Neighborhood Council. I appreciate the opportunity to share with you who I am today. Over the past 10 years of my time here in Richmond, I've seen all too often people look outside of the city for the answers that our city needs. I started a nonprofit eight years ago, fully staffed by Richmond residents, because I believe that the answers lied in the hearts of the residents right here. From that, I had a youth who said he had an idea for a bike shop. And I said, you know what, we'll do that, but we're going to do it a little differently. I'm not going to be your boss. We're going to make it a worker-owned bike shop. And for the past six years, that bike shop has been running and operated here in Richmond, 100% owned and operated by Richmond residents. I am running for city council because I would like to create those pathways, provide those opportunities for the residents of Richmond, because I believe that the residents, if you live in Richmond, you should have the opportunity to own your home and own a business and be engaged in the civics of Richmond.
Thank you, candidate Smith. Now, candidates, we will dive into our questions. I want to let everyone know and remind our audience at home, these questions have been carefully crafted by the Fairmead Hilltop Neighborhood Council. And I'll deliver them with fidelity to what they've written down. They put a lot of thought into it, so thank you very much, Fairmead Hilltop Neighborhood Council. So, again, with every question, we will have a random order by which I will call on each of you to answer the question after I have delivered it. Also, I want to remind all candidates, for the sake of acoustics in our broadcasts, please speak loudly and into your microphones, and please don't turn your microphones off. Question one. Between sales, sewer, and property taxes, Richmond has some of the highest taxes in the region. Why should a business start up or relocate in the city of Richmond? And first for that question, candidate Melvin Willis.
Yes, part of the reason why we end up having these high tax measures is because either community groups or cities figure out how to come together to bring in new revenue, and usually that ends up being a sales tax or we're tied into some other deal where we owe money on previous debt, and it's required for the city to figure out how do we fill in that debt. Meanwhile, there's a ballot initiative on the California ballot as Prop 15 to close a corporate tax loophole that allows corporations to pay taxes back in, for rates back in 1970s. Part of the reason we have some of these high taxes is because there's been too many efforts to bring in revenue, and we've been turning to the working-class people and homeowners rather than the big businesses that haven't been paying their fair share because there's been many deals and lobbies that get them out of paying that. But the thing that's excited about Richmond is that anybody that comes to the city of Richmond just is amazed at how involved the community is, how much collaboration there is with the community, even with some of the division, the beautiful shorelines we have, and also the culture and atmosphere, and just the willingness to be resilient and grow with the benefits of the community, and that is something that's worth businesses locating back in Richmond for.
Thank you, candidate Willis. Next, same question, candidate Ahmad Anderson.
I think one of the biggest challenges is we don't shape the city of Richmond to be an economic gateway. We need to incentivize businesses to come here. You do that by showing you have an investment in your people, by developing a workforce development and skills training program with skilled trained and apprenticeship programs, but you also have to have, make sure they have skin in the game and have social responsibility. That means coming to us with community benefits, to restore youth programs, restore our parks, and work towards eradicating poverty. Have them put a percentage on the process so that you know that you are going to make sure that they don't pimp us, coming to us, earning money off our backs, and leaving our citizens high and dry, paying for the taxes. In addition to that, we need to work within our means and have fiduciary responsibility in the city of Richmond and work within that process. We should look forward to continuously bringing business here as long as they're interested in what the priorities are of the city. We already have a plan, the 2030 general plan, existing roadmap, and paint a pathway out of COVID-19 and the fiscal crisis. We continue to do that with workforce development, Richmond Build, strengthen union partnerships, and look towards developing that with buildings and trades and the city of Richmond, Chamber of Commerce, and Council of Industries as well.
Thank you, candidate Anderson. Next up, same question, candidate Gail McLaughlin.
Thank you so much. I'm committed to keep taxes down for our residents. We have two ballot measures that people should vote yes on. Yes on Measure U, which is a grocery receipts business tax, a fare tax, that will prevent, in fact, lower taxes on small businesses under 250,000 grocery receipts. Those who can afford more, those big businesses will pay more as they should, like other cities have throughout the Bay Area. So we'll be on par with other cities, and we'll be able to take in 20... Oh, wait, I'm sorry. We'll be able to take in $9.5 million of extra taxes through this Measure U ballot measure. We also have Prop 15, which is a state measure or proposition that will bring into the city of Richmond 21 million in additional taxes for our city. So this is where we should get our revenue. Our residents have been taxed to death. This is true. We also need to get our sewer system and our wastewater system away from this private contractor, Veolia, which has been responsible for raising the rates on our taxpayers. We have wonderful amenities to bring businesses into Richmond, like our 32-mile shoreline, our Richmond Greenway, our beautiful parks, and we need a marketing plan with community input as well.
Thank you, candidate McLaughlin. Next up, same question, candidate Claudia Jimenez.
Thank you. And I agree that we have some high taxes. And one of the things is the sewer, that is a big corporation that is privatizing that. So we need to start looking at how we get Veolia to be more accountable to the community because we are paying a lot of higher taxes and higher sewer rates because we have a corporate entity that is privatizing our public services. And other thing is that we need to change the tax structure that we have. The tax structure that we have is outdated, and now we have in the ballot an opportunity to have Measure A and to vote yes on Measure U, so we can update that and we can start putting small business with big corporation in the same bucket, or small landlords and big landlords in the same bucket, and make sure that big corporation and big landlords pay their fair share so we can have the resources to support small business that can come here. Because if we don't take care of the small businesses that are here by providing services with more revenue, we won't be able to bring other small businesses or other business. We need to take care of them, and we have Measure U in the ballot with an opportunity to upgrade our tax system. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Jimenez. I'll now repeat the question, and then we have four more to answer it. Between sales, sewer, and property taxes, Richmond has some of the highest taxes in the region. So why should a business start up or relocate to the city of Richmond? Next up for this question, candidate Najari Smith.
Thank you for re-stating the question. I think it's important to answer the question, but sometimes we're not asking the right question. I think the question is, what are we doing to nurture the entrepreneurial spirit of the residents right here? It's probably going to be a continuous theme that I'm thinking about the people of Richmond and how we can build opportunities for them, resources for them. What are we doing to allow them to start a business here in the city? You know, Berkeley also has really high business taxes, but they have a very flourishing business district, run by mom-and-pop shops, and that's something that I envision for Richmond. Every, you know, walking through the street and saying, oh, you own the bowling alley up the block, or you own the shoe repair store up the block from my bike shop. You know, what are we doing to really invest in the people versus just giving it all away with hopes that we attract a big-box store? That's the question.
Thank you, candidate Smith. Next, same question, candidate Ms. Dandy.
First thing we have to do is figure out how to lower our tax structure, and then we have to go into the community and ask them, what do they want in this community? Within all the things that we've been losing and all the businesses that we've been losing, we have a lot of small business, mom-and-pop businesses that are running out. We have to go back to them and ask them, why did they leave, and what would they do? What could we do for them to bring them back? We have to get the community involved. We have to teach our children about entrepreneurship, how to bring them into a community, how to bring them and build in the community that they're in. We have to ask and put in incentives for business to come in to give them the priorities of what we're going to do while they're here to build them better. We have to work on local hiring to keep them here, to make sure that the people that live here don't have to drive 20, 30 miles outside of the city to work outside the city, to live here, to, in order to live and establish a living establishment here. I just lost the word, sorry. We have to utilize all the programs that we have here, have here. The living wages, we have to make sure that their living wages work on the things that can build in the building trade that they want to. I just lost the whole thing looking at the thing. I am so sorry. And our community groups, we have to work on our previous debt before we start anything else in order to build here in Richmond.
Thank you, candidate Dandy. Next up, same question, candidate Mike Vasilas.
Well, I think businesses should come here because of the potential of this city. I think it doesn't, it's not too hard to see how much potential we have. Such a beautiful city, 32 miles of shoreline. And I think, you know, in my experience here, new residents as well as residents that have been here for a long time, all want to see Richmond fulfill its potential, and that can be an inclusive process. It will, you know, everyone will benefit from that. But in order to do that, we need stability, and I think what Richmond has been lacking is that stability, and that's stability on the governmental front. I think we have an environment that's very unpredictable, and when businesses want to invest, they want to take out that risk. They want to know that there's predictability and stability, and that takes a council who understands the responsibility of a small business, the risk, the investment of that, and how everyone benefits from that, whether it's our residents who get to enjoy those amenities, whether it's our city who gets more tax revenue from these businesses. We also have, you know, a history of poor financial management, and I think Veolia is a pretty good example of that. This is a decision that was made 15 years ago that we're all paying for greatly. So we just need to stop making the same mistakes we've made in the past, get on the right track, build on the momentum of the ferry, the new businesses that have come here, and just, you know, get things back on track. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Vasilas. Next, last for this question, candidate Vinay Pimpley.
Sure. So, a few years ago, Mayor Bart had an image branding campaign, and they asked the businesses, what are your three top problems? And one of the top three was unpredictable city council. And you can see why. About half the candidates, when asked, why should businesses start here, they started saying how businesses are bad and how all these taxes on businesses are a good thing. So I'm actually going to answer the question. And, you know, the things we have really going for us are, you know, if you want to have a bigger company, we have cheap space. Cheap space is a big deal. Unfortunately, we are only attracting warehouse-type businesses. We need to reach out to, we need to make targeted outreach to other businesses. As far as the startup-type businesses are concerned, they really like to look at the quality of life, and the quality of life really depends on where your small business is at. We need to really improve the permitting process that we have, so that small businesses can take off, our neighborhoods can become attractive, and we can attract those startups. Thank you.
Thank you, candidate Pimpley. Now we will move to our second question, and this one is one that is near and dear to the Fairmead Hilltop Neighborhood Council's heart. This is about the Hilltop area where we're having this debate tonight. The redevelopment of the shops at Hilltop had the potential to bring great revenue into the city, provide hundreds of jobs, become a destination for shoppers inside and out of Richmond, and even help with the shortage of housing in Richmond. But that project seems to have dissolved. Keeping in mind that we have to let the owners develop their own property, how would you help them in their plans so the needs of the community are balanced with the needs of the owners? How would you respond if the owners refuse to use local union craftsmen to build their project? For that, let's begin with candidate Mike Vasilas.
Well, I think working with the owners is obviously crucial. It's up to the owners to come up with their own plan that makes sense for them, but at the same time, we need to facilitate a way in which they can be creative with that property. I think we all have kind of realized that retail, for the most part, and big-box malls is kind of a dying, if not already dead, industry. So just ways in which we can work with the owners to come up with... So just ways in which we can work with the owners to come up with creative solutions, whether that's converting that space into a trades campus, right? Some sort of school, something that can attract people to the area. So not only do you have people coming to Hilltop for that property, but all the surrounding companies as well and businesses that can grow out of that. You know, the more people that can come to this spot, the better. I'm a supporter of using union labor. And I would definitely work with the labor unions as well as the owner to make sure that both sides are taken care of. I think that's important to me. But it's just about a lot of good conversations, being creative because, you know, we need to think outside the box and we're talking about the future of commercial and industrial land. Thank you.
Next, candidate Ahmad Anderson.
Well, yes, the Hilltop Mall is 70 acres in filled development zone for more than just 5,000 housing. In addition to this mixed-use project, it should combine retail, housing, and transportation as well. It would be transported for the Hilltop District and is a priority recruit right ownership group for the project in the city. I think many folks many years ago will remember that folks, we went from having a great downtown and then they built the El Cerrito Plaza. It killed our downtown and then we came back to fight with the Hilltop. Hilltop was not the answer. You have to look at what the community needs are, what they produce. Is it good for the city? Can they afford it? Is it sustainable? If we don't have that in place and find the right ownership that's willing to hire folks through, as I mentioned, our skilled and trained apprenticeship program to help build the facilities as well as career development and looking at what we have here in a mixed-use basis, we will continue to fail. It's a shame that we can look from Hilltop here right over in Pinole and see that Pinole is booming. We need to have the same direction in leadership that has that wisdom to be able to have the mixed use to bring people to the table who can work collaboratively. It's fine to talk about the there and then and now we're in the here and now, still talking about problems of those who used to serve on the city council and lead this city. We need the new leadership and we need folks that are innovative and will have results-driven leadership in place.
Candidate Gail McLaughlin.
Thank you. So I know that Hilltop is recently being sold again. It's obvious that the old model of malls surrounding by big parking lots are passe at this point in time. Only Walmart remains as a tenant in this COVID era. The current owner is rebranding the site as a life sciences space and willing to lease or sell space in whole or in part to serve a variety of uses, including life sciences and labs, office, hotel, retail, and residential. It could become a high-density mixed-use development with a complete, fully walkable community. This site, being in the urban core and not on the shoreline, is a good site where we should be developing houses. A business park and science lab would also be a good use. It's important to keep the public abreast of any plan so the public has a chance to weigh in. Now, how would we make sure that union labor is used? Well, we have to explore conditions that we could put in place before providing permits for development of the site. So I definitely think we should require them to use union labor and PLA would be in order. So I think there are so many opportunities at Hilltop to really, really present a whole new type of vision for a mixed-use site. So thank you.
Candidate Claudia Jimenez.
Thank you. And I think like one of the things that we need to do is first to create a space for the community to come here and really make sure that we have a community plan that propose what we can develop. And, but I feel like this site is a wonderful site to develop misuse and high density and many other amenities and bring a small and larger business to this area. This is a well-located area and we need to make sure that we have bring developers that wants to work with the community to do a really well-thought-out community benefits agreement that really benefit the community and don't push people out. And also to create a strong PLA. So our unions have a local hire and we make sure that the people who are building these are from the community and getting the jobs that is needed. Thank you.
I'll now repeat the question and then go to the next four candidates to answer. Keeping in mind that we have to let owners develop their own property, how would you help them in their plans so the needs of the community are balanced with the needs of the owners? How would you respond if the owners refuse to use local union craftsmen to build the project? For that, candidate Vinay Pimplay.
So first, the simple part of the question, yes to unions, yes to PLAs. Now, folks, here's the thing, you know, when you ask retail businesses to come here, their first question is, we will come if you will supply us with our customers. And here's the thing, when Hilltop Mall sold last time, it sold for $30 million, okay? The space is entitled for 9,000 housing units. That comes to $3,300 per housing unit entitlement. Why did that happen? Because it was marketed as a mall, which is a failing model. The first thing we need to do is to really target building of housing because the way to make retail space successful is by making sure that there's high-density housing there to begin with. And once the businesses come, once the retail comes, it will become an attractive place for other businesses. So we need to have a sequence. We need to really outreach to owners in a very targeted way. And if we do that, we will succeed spectacularly. Property taxes alone from houses could bring the city $20 million a year. Thank you.
Next, candidate Najari Smith.
So yeah, much like some of the other candidates, I also say yes to unions and to PLAs. I think that there's not enough conversation between different constituencies. I believe that the property owners should talk to the potential business owners, that they should share these ideas. I remember my own experience with trying to find a location to start a bike shop. You know, a kid says, we want a bike shop. And I'm like, where are we going to put it? And having people tell me no, time after time after time, until I was able to actually have a conversation with the property owner that opened up their doors. And the bike shop has been there for six years now and still growing. There's, I believe in the win-win, that there's nothing good about having vacant spaces that that actually brings down a neighborhood, it brings down a city. So at the city level, we could, there are ways that we can tax based on properties being vacant as an incentive to fill in those spaces as well as providing incentives for filling up those spaces as well.
Candidate Melvin Willis.
Yes, to project labor agreements and union labor. And if for some reason the owners and Hilltop developers didn't want to accept those conditions, then I wouldn't be able to support the project. Part of the problem that I've seen, you know, in the past nine years of organizing, anytime we talk about a business is it's always an us-against-them kind of scenario where community members have a vision of what they want to see done with the things in their backyard, but the folks who are potentially having a project are pushing back and there's a resistance. In order for something like the redevelopment of Hilltop to be successful, community members and stakeholders need to be a part of that process from beginning to end. One example that I have is on Richmond City Council, I got to approve a housing development that was in the Brickyard Cove Point, Richmond area. And the reason we got to approve the housing development is because the developers walked up to us and said we had a collaborative relationship with the residents. At first, when they first came in with the ideas and projects they had, the residents were absolutely against it and didn't want it to happen. But after careful collaboration, not only was the project accepted, but it was approved and assumingly has already been developed by now because this was back in 2018. So we have to make sure that residents are involved in the process and they know what's going on because nobody wants to know that there's a big development going on and thinking that they're not going to have access or inclusion in it. And if it is housing, there's need to be mixed-use affordable housing.
And our final candidate on this question, candidate Ms. Dandy.
Like everyone else, yes for unions and yes for PLAs. Working with the owners is very crucial, but the same as working with community members. We need to sit down and talk to everyone and get everyone's opinions and inform them of the best ways that things like building the community centers and different things are crucial for everyone's use. The important reasons that I believe to work with the local community members is to bring revenue in and so they can build all together and they will come. The youth are important and they will build, that's a great way to build. I'm trying to read. The best way to do this is to talk to the community members and it's really crucial to talk to the owners. Once we get the owners started and looking into what the community needs, local hire, employment, affordable housing, mixed use, all those things will come together and we will understand why we need this and how we'll build revenue. As we build the revenue for our city, people will understand and they will want to come in. To do all these things, we have to make this something where the community wants things. We can't make it a us-versus-them. We have to make it where people want things. They will come. Kids can have jobs, summer jobs, adults can have summer jobs, seniors can have jobs. We can all build this together. And as long as we build this together and we work together, we can build a community that makes things where everybody is welcomed.
Thank you, candidates. We have gotten through two questions. And now question number three, again, crafted and provided by the wonderful Fairmead Hilltop Neighborhood Council. Question three, the council has adopted a policy where renters can get a pass on paying rent until the COVID-19 crisis has passed. What do you tell landlords when renters walk away from potentially tens of thousands of dollars of back rent that they have no ability to pay? And we will begin with candidate Vinay Pimplay.
So, you know, once I was shopping with Costco at the start of the COVID pandemic and I heard an employee say, I'm not going to pay the rent when this moratorium expires. I'm just going to leave. And that is a very serious thing. And part of what really concerns me about these laws that are being passed is there is no requirement of documentation for documentation showing that the renter's income has been severely affected by COVID. You know, if these laws were not simply targeted at landlords but were meant to actually help renters who need the help, they would have said, well, you get help in proportion to your loss of income. And the other thing is, yes, you know, what we really need is a rent relief fund to which everybody contributes. Because we have a lot of landlords who are seniors, where this is their retirement. You know, and so if they don't get any income, what are they going to do? They are going to lose their retirement. And I think we got to stop that while still helping the renters who need the help. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, candidate Melvin Willis.
No, yeah, this COVID-19 crisis has flipped everything upside down on its head. We were already in an affordable housing crisis. And then when this happened, this just exacerbated and made it worse. But for me, the reason I supported the moratoriums and the reason I supported making sure nobody got kicked out of their homes because of COVID-19 debt is, A, if we're supposed to be sheltering in place and there are so many people, I believe there's atlases out there saying there's four to five million people right now that qualify for eviction. And if they get evicted, everybody pays. You've already seen how a lot of these pop-up encampments have showed up in Berkeley. There's some all over Richmond. We've even had to put out a few fires because of encampments that have popped up in Richmond. I supported and put an item on the agenda to take a position that there need to be a complete cancellation of rents and mortgages to not only say that that's what I believe, but to send a statement that that's what needs to be done for everybody to recover. And now with AB 3088 that has passed or the governor's order, tenants are now required to pay 25% of their income moving forward, at least if they can prove COVID debt. And all other debt needs to be gotten in small claims court. Whether a tenant pays now or you evict them tomorrow, there's still debt that needs to be owed. So let's keep people sheltered and healthy.
Ahmad Anderson.
I believe that, I believe property owners are business people as well. In conjunction with not putting people out on the street, there needs to be a mechanism that not only that they are able to pay a part of their rent, but that rent should be directed not only through them, but through the property management and kept record of so that we know, ensure those individuals not only are paying, but also the properties are being maintained in the same way and fair way and equitably. In addition to that, we need to bring in the state and the government's involvement as well and provide a comprehensive plan based upon not only the county, but the city that we're involved in. It is unfair to make sure that we put, it's unfair to put people out on the street, absolutely. It's unfair that business people as property managers don't have the money they need to put food on their table and roofs over their house. We need to develop a plan that is comprehensive that will address not only the renters, but also the property managers as well and ensure that it is equitable and fair and responsible.
Najari Smith.
So this is like, this is a statewide and even like national issue. I mean, who wants an eviction record on their, on their record? Who wants to lose out on that rental, that rental income? I feel like this, when we have things this large on the horizon, we have to work with other municipalities, other counties, and even other states to see where the solutions are. Along with, I'm a fan of rental forgiveness, but we have to have a plan for implementing that. I think at the municipal level, we could do something around property taxes and passing on the savings from those, from forgiveness of property taxes on to the tenants who reside in those, in those spaces. So we also need to consider the consequences of having thousands, you know, thousands of people in our city without a place to live. And what does that look like on the long term? And what is it going to take in order to repair damage of that level?
I'm going to repeat the, hello? I'm going to repeat the question now and before our hosts have asked us to not turn off our mics and not tap the mic. Candidates, please leave them on. Repeating the question and then four more candidates to address it. What do you tell landlords when renters walk away from tens of thousands potentially of dollars of back rent that they have no ability to pay? And for that, Ms. Dandy.
Well, to begin with, I knew it was going to be a big problem when everyone put out there, don't pay your rent, you can't do this because there's a lot of other entities that go along with this. Mortgageurs, banks, and all these people that go along with this. So what I would have told, or what I would tell or explain to an owner of a home about all this back rent is first to apply for some of the programs that can help you kind of recompensate some of the money that you have lost. Secondly, I would try to look for other renters to rent your place so you can compensate for some of the rent that you still lost before. The other thing is to try to look into all programs that work with you to maybe take off or shave off because of COVID-19. COVID-19 has put everyone in a devastating place. So there are programs that has put people in certain places that have helped them catch up. The other thing is just to make sure that you're, we're not still telling people not to pay their rent. Some people are going back, some people are getting their unemployment. Try to pay your rent where it can help everyone settle down. We know we're all in a devastating place, but we all have to help each other. And in order to help each other, we have to be right and do the right thing and pay the rent and help each other out where we won't be in the situation that we are in. And the government needs to put- And the government needs to put certain priorities in place.
Mike Vasilas.
Well, the first thing I've been telling the landlords that I've talked to is sorry that we have a council that has no regard for their property owners whatsoever. I knew this was a ticking time bomb, I think we all did from the get-go. And I'll start off by saying that no one wants to kick out any of their tenants, they never do. But you have to look at it from both perspectives and understand that there needs to be a mechanism in place to ensure that the tenants that do not pay their rent or need funding or need help have proof that they can show the landlord, so at least there's some paper trail there to start out with. Second of all, we need to have some sort of recourse for this. It's irresponsible and it's very easy to pass a more, an eviction moratorium, it's very hard to do the hard work and actually get something in place that can provide funding for both tenants and property owners to make everybody whole. I've done that from the get-go, we tried to start a rent relief fund and I'm going to still continue to work on that. This would earmark federal funds should they become available and we would utilize the existing housing authority to make sure that everyone's made whole. If we continue to kick the can down the road, create this dividing line here, we're all going to pay the price. We need to be proactive, we need to work together, ensure that everybody's made, made whole here and I will do that as a city council member. Thank you.
Gail McLaughlin.
Okay, so first of all, the housing crisis was bad before COVID. COVID has made it worse. The economy was bad before COVID, maybe not bad for the rich, but it was bad for the average person. It's worse now, maybe not for the rich now, but it's definitely really bad for the average person. So I want to start out by saying that I don't think renters are going to walk away when COVID ends and the moratorium ends because the cost of housing in the Bay Area is so high and to find another place, they're going to have to come up with first month, last month and security deposit. So plus, you know, pay ongoing rent. So I don't see them as leaving. What I do see is some help needed for renters so that they could pay their rent back in a longer span of time so that the landlord will eventually get reimbursed. So I think we should help renters avoid eviction with policies, legal aid and financial assistance. We should also help landlords that are in need with state and federal funding, we could seek out what funds are available and help those landlords who are truly in need. But again, I think it's the renters that are going to be the biggest problem and if this big eviction happens with so many people after the moratorium is lifted, our homeless population, which has already grown because of COVID, will only increase more.
Claudia Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you. COVID-19 has demonstrated the inequalities that we have already here in Richmond. And I think like, in this sense, the city can have and play a big leadership role by bringing together renters and landlords and to negotiate payments and also to be leading, creating funds that can relieve these renters and help them to pay their, to their landlords. I know that the rent board right now has a fund that is supporting low-income renters, but this is not enough and we need to make sure that we expand that with state and working with the state and county. We need to make sure that this is happening. And this is already happening in Oakland where the city and landlords and renters and also a small business who are also struggling to pay their, their rents are coming together to make sure that there is a negotiation and there is things in place so the small landlords don't have to take the burden on this. But also we help everybody in this because everybody is struggling. Not only renters, not only small landlords, but homeowners that are struggling to pay their home, their mortgages and we need to have solution for everybody. Thank you.
Thank you candidates, and now moving into question number four. Solving the homeless crisis cannot be done solely at the city council level, but dealing with the encampments and with trash, garbage, drug and alcohol abuse and theft can be addressed by the council. The question is, considering that the city has limited funds, what solution do you see to a problem like this that affects the quality of life for the rest of Richmond's residents? Some of the ratiest looking areas in Richmond are actually owned by Caltrans. How would you apply pressure on Caltrans to step up and take action? So we have a two-part question here. Part one is, what solution do you see to this problem? It's the larger problem of homelessness and all that comes with it. And also the particular problem of Caltrans' own property and pressuring that institutional partner to improve. And for our random order, we will begin with candidate Gail McLaughlin.
Thank you. Homelessness is chronic in Richmond. It emerges from our society putting profits over health and housing. The pandemic has made it worse. Human beings like you and I are camping in public spaces because they're, they have no other option. Homelessness is not a crime. It has been legally established that homeless persons can sleep in public areas if no other place is available. I understand the valid concerns of many of our residents about health and safety in their neighborhoods. It's distressing that our current mayor and council majority have focused on building homes for the wealthy at Point Mulatto. Instead, we need to focus on developing the transitional village, also known as a safe park, planned for six acres in the city part of North Richmond. This safe park will limit encampments throughout the city and will provide services and programs. I'll work with others to make this safe park a very special place. We all need to be in solidarity with those suffering homelessness. I commend all the groups working to help, including GRIP, the Homeless Task Force, which I convened, the street team, the church groups and others. These groups need our support. We're living in difficult times, let's not ignore the suffering of others. Let's be in solidarity and build a better Richmond for all and let's work with Caltrans as well. We can have meetings with them and address the solution that would help for all.
Thank you, Gail McLaughlin, candidate for District Five. Next up, Najari Smith.
Many of those encampments are on Caltrans' property. I think that this is, in the spirit of collaboration, working with, with Caltrans to address that issue. How can we direct Caltrans' funding to go towards, to go towards building out city-owned property that could be made into transitional housing and even permanent housing? Therefore, you have one, one entity that's, that's providing the property and another entity that's providing the funding to rehab the property and repurpose it. You know, and that, that helps out on, on multiple levels. It reduces dumping, it, it, it's a public safety issue that can be alleviated and it's for the health of the, of the people who reside in Richmond, you know, albeit on, under a freeway or on a side park. I believe that the answer is to house these people and we can do it together. That's a part of how I would like to reimagine Richmond.
Thank you, Najari Smith, candidate for District Five. Next, Ms. Dandy.
You asked two questions, one about mental health and another about Caltrans. The first thing about mental health is that we need mental health services here in Richmond, which will help alleviate some of the distance problems that we have. If we have a mental health issue and someone needs to be picked up, instead of driving them all the way to Martinez, we'll have resources here. We need resources and services to be taken care of here in Richmond because we have our own set of problems. And the fact that we have them spread out, it kind of hurts the people that actually live here. And a lot of our people, which people do not understand about mental health, is that in their mental, they do know if they go too far out, they're going to get dropped off and won't be able to come back home or find a way home. And in that fact, we need to sit down and get more services, more resources and more people out here that look like the people that are having the mental health issues. The second part is working with Caltrans. I was out there today on McDonald's and I pulled over and there was two Caltrans trucks out there and all the trash that was out there, it's not just from the homeless encampments, it's from people illegally dumping. And if we can get cameras or different things to find out where that illegal dumping is coming from, we can alleviate some of that trash that's out there. Working with Caltrans, they have different parts of the community that they work with. And the fact that we have contractors that come out and clean up, we should just pay that money into Caltrans, get that, them to clean up the areas that they need to clean up and look around all the places and we have places like SOS and everybody else and GRIP and places that can help these places. That's what we need to do instead of going contracting and looking elsewhere.
Candidate for District Six. Next, Claudia Jimenez.
Thank you. So first, the idea of housing first is what we give people housing and then support them in the challenges that people are facing. What COVID-19 has shown us is the resources are there, but not the political will. Secondly, state and county were moving funds to house our homeless population and pay for them to be in hotel rooms. So we need to continue to work with the state and county to make sure that we have the resources so we can resolve our homelessness. And we as a Board of GRIP, which is the homeless shelter, I think like we need to collaborate with them. We have some infrastructure already in the city of Richmond that we need to expand and we need to work with Caltrans funding to collaborate with that. And as other candidates are saying, we need to make sure that we don't criminalize homelessness and we need to make sure that we are putting resources to support them so that they have housing and then have the resources that they need so they can be stable and they have the housing and they can keep the housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudia Jimenez, candidate for District Six. And now through the halfway point of this question, I'll repeat the question for all of our benefits. It's a two-part question. Considering that the city has limited funds, what solution do you see to the problems that come with proliferating homeless encampments and that, that affect the quality of life for the rest of Richmond's residents? And some of the worst-looking areas in Richmond are actually owned by Caltrans. How would you apply pressure on Caltrans to step up and take action? For this question, Melvin Willis.
Yeah, so there are candidates that have served on the Homeless Task Force, Gail mentioned it, as she was one of the ones that helped formulate it and I served as a chair and I stay still in contact with them on the back end. But we were going to do a community cleanup on one of the encampments that was on Caltrans' properties and what we did was we worked with the Homeless Task Force members, we worked with city code enforcement and we got in touch with Caltrans saying like, "This property is a mess, it needs to be cleaned up." And when we were having barriers with them, the Richmond Police Department and other city staff, we decided as community members that we were going to go out and clean it ourselves and not only do that, but engage with homeless community, connect them to services that were available or give them water and food. But because we took that step, Caltrans decided that they didn't want the liability and they just cleaned it up themselves. It's a property that's over there on Seventh Street when you're starting to head to North Richmond. And I think that's very effective. There are already community organizations that do community cleanup, so we should engage with neighbors in those surrounding areas so there's more bought-in and investment in the community and organize those kinds of cleanups and put pressure on Caltrans to keep the property clean.
Thank you, Melvin Willis, candidate for District One. I'd also like to remind everyone and our viewers at home that the other District One candidate, Eleanor Thompson, is unable to be with us tonight due to a family emergency and our hearts and thoughts are certainly with her. Next for this question, Ahmad Anderson.
Thank you, sir. One of the things that I think is important to recognize is that this should be a comprehensive plan within Contra Costa County, that our efforts, although as strong as they are, we just manage the process. We need to do an intake on who is there from the homeless, we have the working homeless, we have folks that are mental health, we have folks that are returning veterans, we have folks that are re-entering the, from the system and we need to be able to work with them and apply the appropriate services. In addition to that, we need to look at housing that they can afford. There are modular houses that are $250 a month. We should work with our state senator and our assembly, assembly person to be able to assist us in the, in the, in the issues that take place and not getting Caltrans to address their property. I know that we only have 300-some thousand dollars from the Homeless Task Force and that's not enough. That's a pilot program that needs to be encouraged and, and supported, as we already heard from Melvin and being part of that. And we need to encourage Caltrans to kick in and be responsible to the communities in which, in which they cross each and every day. The 80, 80, 80 quarter, the 80 quarter, 580 quarter, we need to be involved in that process and hold them accountable. It's also helpful that the neighborhood coordinator and councils come together and address those needs from North Richmond to Ryden Road to East, East Richmond Heights as well.
Thank you, Ahmad Anderson, candidate for District Five. I also want to remind all candidates, I know it's difficult, please keep your face as close as possible to your microphone so that we have good audio for our audience at home. And now, next, Vinay Pimplay.
Yes, so I have attended our city's Homelessness Task Force meetings and we came up with a lot of good ideas to address the issue of homelessness. Some of them, some of those ideas have gotten real funding. We have a warming and navigation center. We've also put some money into safe organized spaces where we train homeless folks to make sure that the encampments are run in an organized way, that they are cleaned up. And my friend, Daniel Barth, was key in organizing those. So I think, I think we do need to keep supporting these things. One of the key things though to understand about the homelessness issue is that it's really primarily not a housing issue, it's a services issue. People who are homeless really need help. And so, you know, the role of state agencies is really key. When Gavin Newsom ran for governor, he said he was going to appoint a homelessness czar to take care of this problem. We really need to turn the heat on him to make sure that he delivers. I've been endorsed by Assembly Member Wicks and I'm going to go to her and really demand that state agencies play their part when it comes to mental health services, substance abuse services and the other services that our homeless folks need. Thank you.
Thank you, Vinay Pimplay, candidate for District Six. Next, Mike Vasilas.
Well, this is definitely a regional issue and I think, you know, we're all dealing with funding issues at the city, you know, county and state level. I think it's going to take a lot of collaboration amongst, you know, county services, the city, as well as local nonprofits that are doing a lot of great work. I think we should look at more of like a private-public combination here to collaborate on this. The first thing I would do is, you know, try and promote and support the existing organizations such as SOS Richmond, which Vinay just talked about, who's doing a great job, they're going around cleaning up blight, they have a mobile shower now that they're bringing to encampments to ensure sanitation within those encampments. So, and that's going to be coming a lot from donations as well, so that's going to take a lot of marketing for these existing organizations to get the funding they need to continue with these programs, that's very important. And I think from the longer-term perspective, we just have to keep working with each other, with the county and the state to come up with longer-term solutions. It's going to be difficult, but we have to do it. As far as Caltrans, I'd be working to put pressure on Caltrans through Buffy Wicks, who's now on the Transportation Committee. I mean, it doesn't take much, you, you drive down 80, you drive down 580, look at our, our gateways to the city and they're just covered with trash. I mean, the taxpayers deserve better and I'll put a lot of pressure where I can to get that resolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike Vasilas, candidate for District Five. And now moving on to question number five, candidates. Many voters are confused by the new district elections and we hear from many concerned that because they're not voting for anyone from their district this election, that they won't be represented. As a candidate running to represent a particular district, how would you balance the needs of your district and the needs of the city as a whole? And our first on this question will be Melvin Willis.
Yeah, I, especially how it went down for many reasons, I did not support this district election process. I did not support this district election process. Richmond was already dealing with a lot of division, not just politically, but just culturally and socially as well, and I thought that this would do nothing but exacerbate that. I do see the good ends where, you know, more community control and understand that your neighbor is your representative, but I also feel like it creates an opportunity for folks to continue to work in silos and not worry about the greater whole of Richmond. Me, at the end of the day, if there's an issue in the city, regardless of what district I'm directly over, like, I'm just going to go and deal with the issue. I get calls on the South Side at like Pullman Point when there's issues happening over there with crime, violence, safety, or housing issues. And I get called over here to Heritage Park when it comes to break-in safety issues or the needs of seniors. It doesn't matter what part of the district people are in. What matters is do we have services that are able to alleviate and help people out with their needs, and how are we going about implementing that? And that's still my commitment. I'm actually sad that we're not doing this as an at-large election because I feel like that holds people deeper accountable and more bought into this One Richmond concept as we're running in this new system.
Thank you. Next for this question, Vinay Pimplay.
I always think of my role if I get elected as working for Richmond with an emphasis on the Northeast and Richmond Heights neighborhoods. As far as conflict goes, you know, if I think about what my key issues are, they are education, jobs and job training, and improving public safety. These are issues which everyone, which people everywhere in the city are united on. There isn't really a big conflict. Now, we do have to be careful that, you know, right now, for example, the police resources, code enforcement resources are allocated based on service needs, not just based on population or what have you. And we have to make sure that it stays focused on service needs because there will be a temptation to say it should be based on population, in which case the lower-income neighborhoods will get short shrift. So as far as our district is concerned, I'm definitely going to focus on revitalizing our key commercial corridors, 23rd Street, McDonald Avenue, and San Pablo Avenue. That will make our neighborhoods much more attractive to live in. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Gail McGlaughlin.
Yes, I always have advocated for One Richmond, so I will continue to do that even as I am being elected for one district, District Five. And I will prioritize some of the issues for District Five, but the issues of District Five are also the issues of the city as a whole in so many ways. I bring my values of social, economic, environmental justice, racial justice, and this is important for all the citizens, all the residents of our city. People in District Five are concerned about crime reduction, so is that a concern for all the city. We're concerned about homelessness, so is that a concern for everyone in the city. And if the transitional village starts moving forward, that will allow the encampments to be limited and hopefully diminished in all of the city. So when we come up with solutions, we can see that they will affect all of the city. And frankly, we're all going to be making decisions for the whole city. You know, we don't just make decisions on the council for our one district, we all make all decisions as a council. Some of the issues that I stand for are Green New Deal, are holding Chevron accountable, are implementing our climate action plan. This will help all of the city. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, Najari Smith.
Yeah, the district elections are still really new. You know, in the work that I do, I've always connected through all areas, all parts, all neighborhoods through our Richmond. The district elections is kind of like a box that we've all been placed within. One of the many frustrations that I've heard is that folks don't know which district they're in, they're not sure when the election cycles are, they feel like they're being excluded from the process, or they're not familiar with what's going on. I feel that we need to do continued education around where the districts are, what the election cycles are, and reach out to the community organizations, the community centers, the neighborhood councils, that people regularly engage with, to disseminate that information. I think that that's something, I know that that's something that's going to go beyond just this election cycle, but if we want people to be engaged, informed, empowered, it's worth focusing on. Yeah, I mean, and it's actually a part of creating a united Richmond, which is really what we want.
Thank you. And we'll repeat the question for the latter half of the answers. As a candidate running to represent a particular district, how would you balance the needs of your district with the needs of the city as a whole? And for that, Ahmad Anderson.
Thank you. One of the things is being a cultural steward. Being a cultural steward means speaking to your neighborhood councils within your area that may have diverse concerns, may have different concerns. One thing for me is meeting with the neighborhood councils from the Marina, the Annex, and the South Side. Also getting together and collaborating and having that ability to collaborate with the present city council members once elected, but also going out and meeting with my broad base of support. That's not only in District Five, but also throughout the city. Getting them to understand that safe neighborhoods, job revitalization, economic development, and also homeless is an issue for all of us that are standing up here. But knowing that we can able to be a renaissance, if you will, renaissance, public servant, to be able to walk with kings and queens yet not lose the common touch, it requires us to educate them on what the district is, educate them of the other concerns in the community, talk about the businesses and how we need to revitalize, how we need to incentivize, how we take the taxes on them, be fiduciary responsibility, and looking at the budget, working with buildings and trades, looking how housing is important, not for those that have it, but those who can't even afford it at this time. Working across the board and being able to look in the mirror and say, I am you and you are me, and we must work together to change what it looks like here in the city of Richmond, and I need your help to do that.
Thank you. Next, same question, Claudia Jimenez.
Thank you. My vision is a Richmond for all. And from protecting the shoreline to make sure that we are accounted to sea-level rise, to make sure that we have stronger environmental regulation and racial equity on all policies, this is for all. And we need to understand if we lift the ones who are at the bottom, everybody gets better. But I agree that like we have also, no small, but issues in our district that if we support it, it will improve the life of everybody. And I had the example of working to improve Solano Play Lot, the neighborhood Play Lot, that now is not being used just only by our neighbors, but by many, many parents and many kids all over Richmond. So when we are going to improve Solano, San Pablo Avenue, McDonald, or 23rd, it's not just, even though it's in our district, and we need to focus on revitalizing that corridors, it's going to support a lot of our Richmond residents because then we will have the small businesses so we don't have to ride and go away from our city, and this is what I am. So please, help me to create that Richmond for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Mike Vassilas.
Yeah, I think district elections is interesting. I think one good part about it is that it increases accountability. So when someone in your neighborhood, a constituent within your district, they know who to go to when there's a problem. When something's not getting solved, they know who to go to. I think that increases the accountability. I think one important aspect of taking local issues within your district to the city level and the city at large is really understanding the city, understanding how different each neighborhood is, how different each district is, having that sense. I also think it's really important for a city council member to be the one who's educating their constituency. Some people that may not be familiar with the Iron Triangle, only know the Annex, you have to understand and educate them as to how, you know, issues and decisions made by the council are going to affect the city as a whole. I think it's, you know, I think having maybe a district neighborhood council would be a good idea. You know, now that they're at such a smaller basis, it'd be nice to consolidate the ideas and the needs of each district so each neighborhood can talk amongst each other and then relay their issues to their representative. I think that would be a good idea. But just understanding the city as a whole, understand that we have diversity here and that's great, but we have to look at what's best for everybody and then still uphold local accountability. Thank you.
Thank you. And now for question number six. Do you believe the city should support development of housing for people in all income ranges or just development of low-income and affordable housing? For that, we'll start with you, Mike Vassilas.
Yeah, that's actually one of the points of my platform running for this seat. We have this really stratified, polarized way in which we're going about development goals. We have the high-end stuff, we have, you know, the shoreline developments of high-end condos, and then we have government-subsidized affordable housing downtown. That's not enough. There's a whole lot of people in the middle that aren't being represented in terms of the future of the housing growth in our city. I think we have to look at it, you know, from all income levels, and a lot of that's going to require, you know, zoning changes. We have to lower the cost to build. We need to reorganize our impact fees. I mean, there's a lot of things that hinder housing growth, and then one of my main purposes and goals is to get within the building department, work with them, and understand that how can we get this vacant lot? You know, a vacant lot, the only thing that generates is weeds. How can we bring that lot to get developed, to bring housing for, you know, lower, middle, higher-income people, as well as tax revenue for the city, and get rid of the blight in the process? I think that's one of my main goals, and I'm really confident I can accomplish great things for the city in terms of housing. Thank you.
Thank you. And we will shortly revisit this topic. I want to apologize, in my haste, I overlooked that Ms. Dandy did not have an opportunity to answer the last question. Ms. Dandy, apologies to you and for your consideration. I'll reread the question and please have at the answer. As a candidate running to represent a particular district, how would you balance the needs of your district with the needs of the city as a whole?
As a council member for District Six, first thing I would get to do is, as I've been doing, walking and canvassing District Six and getting to know my neighbors and making sure that their needs and the things that they do need are taken care of now. And as the council member, I will not only just take care of District Six, I will take care of District One, Two, Three, Four, Five, and Six. Because Richmond as a whole is not broken up, it's only broken up, and it holds people accountable for their area, but not just one area. It holds them accountable for all. And what will happen is between all of them, if they cannot find me, they have other council members that they should be able to go to, and it shouldn't be just handed off to that person who belongs to that district. And the fact that I can be able to walk through each district day in and day out, 5:00 in the morning, 2:00 in the morning, 7:00 in the morning, whenever a council, a community person needs me, I can be able to walk through there. I can walk through encampments. And the fact that I can be able to do all that and take care of the whole Richmond instead of particular areas, that's what makes me the great person for District Six. And the fact that Richmond should be just one and is broken up into six districts, we're still All One Richmond.
Thank you, Ms. Dandy. And now, back to question six, which I will reread. Do you believe the city should support development of housing for people in all income ranges or just development of low-income and affordable housing? And for this, Najari Smith.
With, in a city where we have, we were just earlier talking about homeless encampments, you know, and I think of the many residents who are like, who are couch surfing, who are housing insecure, one paycheck away, trying to figure out what they're going to do when the moratorium ends. We have to focus our attention on those most vulnerable. And until we do that, it's like, you know, you have to figure out where your priorities are. You know, and looking at if somebody's already, you know, couch surfing or homeless, we all know that the longer a person is homeless, the worse their mental health condition, and the more resources it's going to take in order to restore them. So with that in mind, I mean, when you say like all income levels, I'm thinking like, you know, folks that I just mentioned, the folks that are, that can't afford their home or can't afford their permanent place to stay, or one check away, or just getting by and not making that, where a third of their paycheck isn't enough to pay the rent. So I say we start there and we move forward from that point.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, Melvin Willis.
There definitely needs to be, we definitely need both because we do definitely need affordable housing, but at the same time, I don't want to create another segregated community either. Like, having mixed income developments in neighborhoods where multiple income levels are living in the same neighborhood not only breaks down barriers but creates a stronger culture. Right now, I'm leaning more towards affordable housing right now because I can say I've door-knocked in many areas of this community. There are definitely vacant homes. It's just the rates in order to be able to rent out that vacant home, or right now even buy that vacant home, is absolutely astonishingly expensive for the average residents to where they are living with their friends or relatives, and you're seeing a lot of overcrowding of households. If we have developments coming to the city of Richmond and somebody who is couch surfing or has been living with a friend for years can't afford an affordable unit in one of those buildings, that's a problem for me. I've always had a problem with this AMI and county AMI because we get bundled up with all these more affluent cities and Richmond residents aren't quite making it enough as individuals to afford spaces by themselves. I was just listening to a Zoom call earlier today where somebody was giggling, who is a teacher, who said, "Ha, ha, ha, yeah, if you live in the Bay Area, you're definitely living with somebody." That wasn't a dream when I grew up, so we need an emphasis on affordable housing, but all housing in general.
Thank you. Ahmad Anderson.
Yeah, first and foremost, the city's general plan already has a balanced supply of housing available for income groups, meaning that the Associate of Area Governments has stated that the city needs to build 47% of new housing in following categories, not only affordable, but extremely low to very low to lower and moderate income households. The challenge is, if we look at that, when we have people come to our city and you want to raise, you want to develop the businesses in the city, one of the challenges is that we don't have enough rooftops. So one of the things that we should do is reach out to places like the AFL-CIO that's put together a billion-dollar investment, Bay Area Regional Affordable Housing. Apple has put together a 2.5 billion, 400 million, but has been committed to date to projects across California. And Google, a $1 billion project that speaks to affordable housing but also addresses the issues that we have in the city of Richmond. It's important to develop a partnership with these organizations so they can be able to support us in the process to meet those housing needs. As we meet those housing needs, it not only impacts our property owners, but it impacts those that are seeking housing, it'll also be able to, opportunity to also look at developers and say to them, "Look, affordable housing is something we need. We don't need to move to in lieu fees. We need to move those fees to other commercial, retail, and real estate development and impact the taxes that will be able to grow and support the city's financial responsibilities."
Thank you. I will repeat the question. Do you believe the city should support development of housing for people in all income ranges or just development of low-income and affordable housing? And for that, Ms. Dandy.
I believe it should be development for all. I'm really leaning towards affordable housing, but what is actually affordable housing? Low income right now is at 104,000. Who actually has that? So in order to think about what affordable housing is, we have to think about everyone that's in here. What is extremely low housing? What is affordable housing? When we think about those things, we have to look at the people that's in the city. Where we're going to build at, what we're going to build, what our prices are going to be, what are our rental prices going to be, what are our retail housing, realty selling is going to be. We have to look We have to look at those things as a whole, not just for one person, not just for races, not for black, white, Latino or anyone. We have to look at everything as a whole to see what our city actually need. Development for all can be of all income, that's seniors, that's youth, that's, uh, black, white, Hispanic, Latino. We need to build something where people want to be, not where they have to be and push them out. We can't gentify our areas just so we can have, say, this is what we're building is. We have to make sure that our city is something that we want to live in and where we want to be and where we want to grow our families and grandchildren at and want to be safe in. So development for all means that everyone here is safe here.
Thank you. Next, Claudia Jimenez.
Thank you. Yeah, we need development for all level, from a street low income to market. I am for development that promotes life, but, and what it means by that is that we have development that is mixed income, so like it's, it doesn't create segregation and includes everybody, so everybody can enjoy the amenities and the services that a new development can come, can provide. Also, that is near, uh, is healthy and near transit. We need to make sure that when we are doing development, we set up regulations to make sure that we don't push the people who are already here. And we need to create innovative solutions. We have nonprofit development. We have, uh, we can look at land trusts and we can look at like community benefits agreement so we can build and bring development that is for everybody and that promotes life for everybody, not for few. Thank you.
Thank you. Same for, uh, next question for Gail McLaughlin.
So yes, housing is a human right for everyone and we need to promote housing justice, but by far and wide, affordable housing is the biggest need in our city. We have a very unequal society and that inequality is growing and it's been shown by studies that unequal societies are the most unhealthy societies. So we have to work at equalizing things. What the city can do, I mean, for-profit developers are not building affordable homes and landlords are raising rents to the extent they can. Um, so what the city can do is develop land trusts. That's where the land remains in trust owned by the community, a church or, or the city. And it's only the homes that are sold, not the land. This reduces the price of new homes by half. So I've promoted these for years. Just recent, recently, housing activists in Philadelphia won a victory with their city agreeing to turn vacant homes and city properties into a land trust. We can do the same. Corporations can pay their fair share to fund these projects. And we also need more high-density housing near transit and we should increase the percentage of affordable units in line with Richmond's median income. But yes, those would also be mixed income, but with a higher percentage of affordable than we now have. Um, we also should, uh, work to have a regional public bank. I'm on an interim board of the East Bay Public Bank to fund a lot of these projects and equalize our society.
Thank you. Same question, Vinay Pimplay.
Yes, so when I was on, uh, city council, I approved every affordable housing proposal that came before us. Those are 450 units of affordable housing. I also approved every medium and high-density market rate housing project that came before us. The key thing to understand about affordable housing is that it really depends on whether they are able to get state tax credits. It is not really up to us. We can't control how much affordable housing gets built and because we can't contribute, in fact, because we are broke, our chances of getting affordable housing is pretty low. So in many cases, it's not the choice between affordable and market rate housing, it's the choice between market rate housing and no housing. The other thing is we do need mixed income housing. If we emphasize exclusively on affordable housing, part of what happens is those tend to get built only in low-income areas because when you go to build affordable housing in higher-income areas like the annex, folks like Gail McLaughlin, Eduardo Martinez, who live in the annex, who otherwise support affordable housing, they vote down those projects. What ends up happening is the low-income projects go to low-income areas, so it's really difficult for those areas to actually come up because you need mixed income housing everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we come up on question number seven. When we do a Google search for the definition of "defund," we see, quote, "prevent from continuing to receive funds," unquote. Nonetheless, many speakers tell us, when they say that we need to, quote, "defund the police," that's not what they mean. The question is, what do you mean if you take action to defund the police? Please share with us what this means to you. If you think this means, quote, "reimagine policing," please describe how you would finance your planned reimagining. And with that, our first candidate will be Claudia Jimenez.
Thank you. And this is a really good question. And for me, it's reimagining public safety. And what I said is that in many ways, Richmond had been ahead of most, of most of the nation in reimagining public safety, so that we address the underlying causes of crime and do no perpetuate resistance system of mass incarceration. The city created this Office of Neighborhood Safety, shifted to a model of community policing and created a community police review commission. I agree with Police Chief Visa French and many others who have pointed out that the police are relied on too much problems that will be better addressed with another type of services, like mental health problems, drug substance disorders, lack of due programs, and other problems are sent to the police at last resort because the appropriate services do not exist and done, and are underfunded. Last city council, the Reimagining Public Safety Community Group presented to the city council. And what we are meaning by that is that we need to look at the resources and how they are spending so to make sure that we are funding the right amounts for the services that we need. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question, Najari Smith.
So some things are overfunded, some things are underfunded, and some things are just plain mismanaged. There are certain things that the police should not be the first responder for, and there's certain things that I don't feel that, um, police should be addressing. I actually stand with the youth when they say defunding the police. From me, that means seeing where there's, where things aren't being managed properly. You know, should police be spending their time, um, addressing homeless issues or addressing mental health issues? Or should that be going to a totally different agency that we don't currently have or an agency that's currently being underfunded? So to me, that means allocating resources to those, you know, to those programs that are addressing those issues. Therefore, reducing the strain on our police while increasing our public safety. So for me, defunding the police means not just throwing money at the problem, but seeing where the money should be spent and placing the resources where they need to be to make us safer Richmond for all of us.
Thank you. Next, same question, Mike Vassilas.
Yeah, I think, uh, this should start with, uh, community conversation and I believe and I'm glad that those are happening right now, uh, to talk to our community, uh, to have the conversation with our police force to see how they can do a better job, to really understand the community's needs and their concerns and make sure they're addressed by their police force. Uh, I believe our, uh, police chief is, you know, publicly spoken about how they can always do better, so let's help them do better. I think one of the ways we should do that is alleviate some of the roles and jobs that they're required to take on. Uh, I think when it's mental health services and other services that should and can and should be provided by the county, uh, that will help them do a better job. It will take away, uh, some of the time that they spent, uh, that can be better used for providing, you know, public safety, uh, for our city. I think that, um, going forward, I think that what we should understand is that the true path towards public safety is supporting our youth, providing opportunities for our children. I think that's the long-term way we really fight crime, but to jump the gun like some have done and bypass the conversations that need to happen and, you know, advocate for arbitrary cut in our police force, irrespective of what that would do to public safety for all of our residents, I think is irresponsible. Um, so it's really conversations, understanding each other and understanding that we as a city, our police force, uh, can always do better and let's ensure that that happens.
Thank you. Same question, Ms. Dandy.
Let's see. Defund the police. Defund means to take away, and a lot of people want to change the word to reimagine. I don't want to reimagine the police because we need them here. I want to rebuild the police. I want to reteach the police. I want to reallocate funds there. I want to repurpose the police. There are certain things that, no, the police do not need to come to every single call. Everyone wants to take a mental health worker, a social health worker to all these different calls. We had a call where a neighbor was eating his grandmother. And the fact that he did that, there's no social worker, there's no mental health worker that can go over there and calm him down. We need to make sure that when we're doing these things and we're using words to help the community, that we use the right words and we don't rile up the community. We want to make sure that when we're taking things away, that we're taking them in the right way. We want to make sure that when we're doing things for the community, that we make sure that the whole entire community is taken care of, just not apart. Cause most of the people that want to defund the police are the same people that are calling the police. We want to make sure that those calls are in the right place and going to the right people. The 911 calls for DV, domestic violence is going up, for child abuse is going up. So we don't want to reimagine something. We want to teach everyone what their, the needs are for. We want to make sure that the people that are calling are calling for the right reasons. We need to make sure that the police and everybody in the community are taking care of each other, not one cause.
Thank you. I'll repeat the question. What do you mean if you take action to, quote, "defund the police"? Please share with us what this means to you. If you think this means to reimagine policing, please tell us how you would finance a planned reimagining. And for this, Vinay Pimplay.
Uh, we have already been defunding our police as in decreasing their resources. Our police staffing is about thirty percent lower than what it was eight to 10 years ago. Uh, most of our other city departments are also substantially lower than they were, uh, many years ago. Now, the issue to understand here is that, you know, I think our city has its priorities right. We have been reimagining, uh, policing for the past few decades. That is why we have been nationally recognized by the Obama administration. We need to continue on that path. As far as, uh, you know, mental health, other services, you got to understand, these are county and state services, they are not city services. Where the priorities are off, they are off at the county level. A wealthy county like Contra Costa County doesn't want to spend, doesn't want to fulfill its responsibilities about taking care of the mentally ill, the homeless, uh, health issues, and they want to push that responsibility onto poor cities like ours. And we got to stop that. We got to make them, uh, accept their responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question, Gail McLaughlin.
Well, we need the police, but we need the police to be accountable. The police should not be involved in social tasks that they aren't trained for and prepared for, and they should be rigorous in their respect and treatment of the rights of every Richmond resident in each and every interaction. Police abuse and violence like in the murder of Petey Perez and the police corruption and abuse observed in the case of Celeste Guap and the inept police handling of the situation that preceded the homicide of Rashida Franklin are not to be tolerated in this city. I support the wonderful work of the Reimagining Public Safety Working Group and want to work directly with them. We can shift some of the duties away from the police, such as responding to mental health calls, homeless issues and other non-violent situations. Calls into the police can and should be redirected immediately to crisis response teams. The police can be backup if a social worker says it is needed. This will necessitate taking some funding out of the police department and putting it into these unarmed response teams and also into much-needed city services to lift up our community, which in itself is a deterrent to crime. Thank you.
Thank you. Same question, Melvin Willis.
Yeah, me, it's reimagining public safety. I'm taking a lot of things into considerations. Um, one thing I'm taking into consideration actually came from a community education video when they at first had the Petey Perez, uh, video on and what happened with that situation. And in the text, it said that in this situation, if an officer feels like that he's a threat of bodily harm or feels scared, then that's the thing that they take into account. They don't take anything else into account after that direct situation. Petey Perez, for instance, was somebody that was intoxicated and unarmed and died because the cop thought that he was go, that this intoxicated young man was going after him to cause him harm. There was no reason for him to be passed away. Same thing happened with Miles Hall in Walnut Creek. He was having a mental health situation and he ended up dying from having interactions with the police. And we have residents that have come to city council saying that called the cops to deal with somebody in mental health and as soon as they came out, the person that they were calling on who was having a mental health incident from interacting with the police somehow ended up dying. There's more to public safety than policing our community. Our community do need mental health services. Uh, friends of mine who have been in domestic violence relationships said the cops actually made it worse because they had to leave and deal with those consequences afterwards. We need another response besides just policing for our community.
Thank you. Last for this question, Ahmad Anderson.
Thank you. Um, what I believe is, when you talk about defunding, it speaks about taking away what's already given previously. We've had budget reductions within the police department and public safety across the board. There's opportunities for us to look at developing training and training that may not come from the police department, but outside agents, especially special, uh, those who are, uh, specially, uh, trained to do the type of training that does speak to community policing, uh, understanding cultural and sensitivity awareness, but also partnership with neighborhood councils, being able to go to the neighborhood councils and be there consistently, being able to walk and talk with the community and have a better understanding of the challenges they face in and, in and every day. Uh, in addition to that, I understand the uptick in violence and law that's long assisted in the city of Richmond, and we must address it. For the issues that are related to, um, mental health, uh, crisis, the issues are related to maybe domestic violence in some cases, our issues of people who are homeless in some other instances, we have community service officers that may be, um, the next step to being trained to assist in this process, other than officers carrying guns or being there with batons. But I definitely believe we need support the police. As I live with my 89-year-old mother, I want to make sure that we enhance the 911 services, that they're there to support her and need her, and we're open to looking at that in a different way.
Thank you. Well, the time has come for our big closing statements from each candidate. You'll each have 80 seconds to provide your closing statement to the voters of Richmond, and we look forward to it. We will start again in random order and we will begin with Claudia Jimenez.
Thank you. These are hard times and business as usual is no longer enough. We face environmental, financial and health crisis, and we need leaders who create solutions to make sure nobody is left out. Richmond has a history of dark money in politics and this year is no different. I am the only city candidate in my district who is not taking corporate fossil fuel, be landlords, developer or police association money. If I am elected, I will make sure we have fair taxes, smart and equitable budget, strong environmental regulation, racial equity in all policies and development that promotes life. My, my vision is to create a Richmond where my kids and all Richmond kids can breathe clean air, have safe streets and opportunities to thrive. Join me in building that vision for, a Richmond for all. I quiero... Y quiero invitarlos al cafecito con Claudia en español este sábado a las 11:30, a las 11 de la mañana a 12, para que juntos podamos decir cuáles son las necesidades, cuáles son los retos, y cuáles son las soluciones de nuestra comunidad. Muchas gracias. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Claudia Jimenez, candidate for District Six. Next, Najari Smith.
I want to invite you all to reimagine Richmond with me. A city that looks inward rather than outward for solutions, a city that believes in development without displacement, that puts our most vulnerable first, that is short-sighted, I mean, is not short-sighted, that looks at things and plans ahead for the things to come, and how that can benefit, you know, not just the current generation, but looking at the next 10 generations beyond us. I believe in a Richmond that shines a light on the assets that we have here, our 32 miles ashore line, our history of saving the world during World War II, ways that we can bring tourism and visitors who circulate their dollars, their currency throughout our city. I believe that we can be a signature city that other cities will look at and reach out to us to see how we solve those problems and how they can replicate those solutions. And I can't do it by myself, so I'm reaching out to everyone that you vote for me and that we can reimagine Richmond together.
Thank you, Najari Smith, candidate for District Five. Next, Melvin Willis.
Well, thank you to the Fairmead Hilltop Neighborhood Council for organizing this event today. And as was already said, coming into 2020, people were saying, "New me, new year, new me," but they weren't expecting the challenges that we were going to be facing this year. And because of the challenges we've been facing this year and the shelter in place, we've been forced to be isolated with our issues, which has had impacts on our mental health. I'm running recognizing that we were already isolated in issues pre-COVID-19, and that's only been exacerbated. I'm running because I believe public service means actually working with the public that you're representing in order to pass issues and policies. Whether we talk about housing, reimagining public safety, healthcare, immigrant issues, economic development, it is important that as public servants that we are engaged with the community, because there's a lot of the, a lot of the complicated questions that were asked, were asked by people who were engaged, but just as somebody door-knocking, there's a lot of people that don't even know that we are in a district election system right now, and they don't even know who their current council members are until I say, "Hi, I'm Melvin, and here's everybody else." So as I'm focusing on housing, homelessness, mental health, whatever it is, I'm going to be focusing on that, but working with my community for solutions and not just in a silo. So vote for me November 3rd, and thank you.
Thank you, Melvin Willis, candidate for District One. Next, Ms. Dandy.
Again, my name is Ms. Dandy for District Six. I will follow the rules, the ones that I make, that I sign, and I blame others for the mistakes that I have made. I am the only candidate in my district that is welcoming to all homes at all times of the days and nights, and call, and able to answer calls at all times, day and night. As your council member, I will be that person that will come to you when you need, like I did today at R. Code, that was called at 8 o'clock in the morning to make it there. There are a lot of things that need to be changed. There are not a lot of new visions that need to be seen. I'm that person to give that new vision to Richmond, along with the rest of the council members that would join me when we take that seat on November 3rd. As that council member up there, I will welcome everybody in Richmond with a welcome hand and a welcome arm. After COVID is over, we can probably give each other a hug. But right now, because we're in this, we're all in this together. And after this is over, we all have to work together. No matter how many of us take that seat, which will only be three, no matter which one of us will take that seat, we still have to work together as one Richmond, one community, one unity, one Richmond. I am Ms. Dandy, District Six, Richmond, California.
Thank you, Ms. Dandy, candidate for District Six. Next, Mike Vasilas.
Hi, thank you guys for having me tonight. Mike Vasilas for District Five. I think we're clearly dealing with unprecedented times, and we have a lot of challenges ahead of us. And I think when we come into this crisis mode, we have a decision to make. We can either use these challenges as a way to divide our city and hope that people are forced to pick sides and create wedge issues and hope that, you know, these emotional issues divide us, but we can't afford to do that. People are sick of that. I think that what binds us together is that everybody wants to be able to plan for their future. They want stability. They want, they want representation that understands that everybody in this city is important. And it's not easy to do that. It's easy to pick sides. It's easy to pick fights, but it's a lot harder to do the hard work to bring all the minds together, to bring the communities together, to come up with solutions. They're going to be very difficult, you know? Times are changing. And I'm committed to that. I'm not a career politician. I'm not part of the establishment. I am up here today because I'm passionate about Richmond, and I'm sick of what's gone on in this city for too long, and we cannot afford to be doing the same things. So if you want to learn more about me, you can call me. You can go to my website at www.mikeforrichmond.com. I'm always available, and it doesn't matter what your opinion is, or, you know, if we disagree. I enjoy embracing and engaging with my community, and I will never shy away from any conversation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike Vasilas, candidate for District Five. Next, Ahmaud Anderson.
Thank you, Hilltop Community Church. Thank you, Hilltop Fairmead Neighborhood Council. I just want to say that the way I was raised is, the rent you pay to live on this earth is giving back to public service. I've done that all my life, no matter where I've lived, in New York, in Iowa, to Richmond, California. Born and raised here as a native son, I believe in the city of Richmond. But what I also understand is it requires leadership, and no one can determine the time and place in which they are born, but they can make that time and place a place of justice, a place of equality, a place of equity, and a place of inclusion. I'm running on that to ensure that we have safe and clean neighborhoods, that we work to job revitalization and economic development. Economic development requires community engagement, to be able to walk with kings and queens, yet not lose the common touch, to have a broad-based support, as I have throughout the neighborhood councils of the city of Richmond, those that are in my district, those that are not in my district, we all live in the same city. I am supported by Mark DeSagne, Tony Thurman, Nancy Skinner, Buffy Wicks, Willie Brown, Demlish Johnson, the Democratic Party, Democratic Party of Contra Costa County, and Contra Costa Building and Contra Costa Trades Council. I am your guy in District Five. Come alive with Ahmaud Anderson 2020.
Thank you, Ahmaud Anderson, candidate for District Five. Next, Gail McLaughlin.
Thank you all again. I want to end by saying we need to face our critical problems with forward-thinking. When we are not prepared for pandemics and other disasters, we get sick. It's worse when we don't have a nearby hospital or medical coverage. The plumes of Chevron's pollution also make us sick. We've had enough low wages, enough brothers and sisters without homes, and enough youth deprived of a quality education. It doesn't need to be this way. We can build differently. We can build in solidarity. I'm endorsed by the California Nurses Association, the United Teachers of Richmond, the Sierra Club, along with 25 other wonderful unions and grassroots organizations. I'm also endorsed by Reverend Phil Lawson, pastor emeritus of Easter Hill Church, Dolores Huerta, and many other dedicated community leaders. I ask for your vote, and I urge the voters of the other two districts to vote for Melvin Willis and Claudia Jimenez. In spite of the challenges of our times, I know when decent human beings come together, we can create beautiful outcomes. I will work to bring us together and achieve a better and healthier Richmond. Please check out my website at galeforrichmond.org. Thank you.
Thank you, Gail McLaughlin, candidate for District Five. And for our final closing statement, Vinay Pimplay.
So thank you to the Hilltop Church and to Fairmead Hilltop Neighborhood Council and to all of you watching at home. You know, the key issues that you have to think about, that you will be thinking about when you vote is, whom would you trust with overseeing a city budget of $165 million? I have the experience of navigating city finances through precarious times in 2015 and 2016. That is why the East Bay Times gave me their strongest endorsement in 2016 and 2018. Who has the heart to fight for the folks who need someone to fight for them? You know, I have a record of volunteering with our students at Richmond High as a mentor for at-risk youth. I have supported every affordable housing project, helped pass the Richmond Promise Scholarship Program. That is why Mayor Butt supports me. That is why three former mayors, or my Anderson, Rosemary Corbin, and Nat Bates all support me. Councilmember Johnson supports me. It's my record on jobs and job training that means that the Contra Costa Building Trades Council is supporting me. So I hope you join them and honor me with your vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you, candidate Pimplay, from District Six. And thank you especially to all of the watchers for the city of Richmond and beyond. You saw how Richmond does it tonight, intelligent, passionate, and respectful. Now it's up to you, the voters, to decide who is going to lead Richmond's future. Please be advised that your mail ballot should be coming out to all Richmond residents within the next week or so. You can mail them to Contra Costa County Elections Division. No postage required. Mail-in ballots are, actually, they're expected to be delivered to voters next week. I want to thank especially the Hilltop Community Church and Pastor Lauren for letting us use this beautiful facility for tonight's evening. And also especially, I want to give a big thank you to Arturo Rantila and Don Gosny for setting up this great event and being the brains behind this forum we're able to have tonight. Again, I'm Robert Rogers. I'm happy to have been your moderator, and please be well and have a good night.